The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Valerie, please bring your state senate members.
Little Falls Township Planning Board meeting of Thursday, October 3rd, 2024 is going to order. Please take notice that adequate notice that this meeting is provided in accordance with NJSA 10-4-8 and NJSA 10-4-10 as follows. A notice that the meeting was promptly posted on the bulletin board, a municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on January 4th, 2024. A copy of this notice was sent via email to the North Jersey Herald of Youth on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notices filed in the Office of the Township District.
Thank you, please.
This meeting is being taken, therefore we ask you to speak louder into the microphone.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Mr. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Cross?
Here.
Mr. Luke D'Amiano?
Here.
Ms. Cattaldo?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Mr. Pochett? Mayor D'Amiano?
Here.
Councilor Miss Gobba?
Here.
Dr. Abbie?
Here.
Mr. Wadde? Mr. Dolan?
Here.
Mr. Remma?
Here.
Mr. Briglia Dorro?
Here.
Mr. Cobler?
Here.
Ms. Chavon?
Here.
Mr. Gilpatton?
Here. Again, thank you. Before we start, just so we have some birthdays to celebrate. We have the mayor last Friday. Happy birthday. He didn't want me to do that. And John Arama. Is that today? Well, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Just kidding. All right, may I have a motion? Oh, sorry. Councilor Miss Gobba, do you have any comments from the council?
Chairman, no one came before the governing body at our last council meeting.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes for September 5, 2024?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Okay.
Please poll the board.
Mr. Karak?
Yeah.
Ms. Cattaldo?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mayor D'Amiano?
Yes.
Councilor Miss Gobba?
Yes.
Dr. Abbie?
Yes.
Mr. Dolan?
Yeah.
Mr. Remma?
Yeah.
Mr. Gilpatton?
Chairman, both yes. Minister approved. May we have two application resolutions memorialized tonight. First one is Big Shine Energy, 1400 Route 46 West Little Falls. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Please poll the board.
Mr. Karak?
Yeah.
Ms. Cattaldo?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Dr. Abbie?
Yes.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Remma?
Yeah.
Mr. Gilpatton?
Chairman, both yes. Resolution is approved. May I have a motion? To approve the resolution for Coric LLC 198 Nurek Poplin Turnpike. May I have a second?
Second.
Please poll the board.
Mr. Karak?
Yes.
Ms. Cattaldo?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Dr. Abbie?
Yes.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Remma?
Yeah.
Mr. Gilpatton?
Chairman, both yes. Resolution is approved. Our first application tonight is a long awaited presentation from an effort that has taken over a year. And we are very proud to have our planner present our final master plan.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I'm back this time for the final presentation for adoption of the master plan. Sam, let me swear in. Oh, of course. Publicary. You swear from the testimony that you're about to give before this board is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes. We know who you are, but for the record. Sure. Senor Kita Chauvin, from H2M, I think. And you're a licensed. Professional planner. My license is in a good, is in good standing. Right. And you prepared the master plan that you're going to present tonight? That is correct.
Your credentials are accepted.
Thank you.
Again.
All right. So as you all know, it's been a year-long process. So next slide, please. So again, I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself, but just so that, to give everyone a background. So what's a master plan? This is a guiding document for multidisciplinary planning. And the municipal land use law sets forth stipulations as to how this should be prepared. And by law, it must be updated every 10 years. And last time a comprehensive plan was prepared for Little Falls was 22 years ago. Of course, it was reexamined in 2008, in 2013, 21, and last year in 2023, where it was recognized that much has changed and there was a need for a comprehensive master plan. Elements prepared, as you all know, is land use, circulation, economic development, sustainability, and open space element. The housing plan element and land use plan element, as per the MLUL, provide a policy framework for adoption of zoning ordinances. So having an updated master plan is that's why extremely important. Next slide, please. Next slide. Oh. Oh, thanks. So as I mentioned earlier, this has been a year-long process. We have, we engaged with the community. We had regular master plan subcommittee. We take three of whom are present this evening. We had an online survey, three community workshops. We interviewed the pertinent department heads. And we, as you know, presented the draft plan a month ago at the last meeting. And then consequently, subsequently, on that Monday, we presented it to the township council. And tonight, we're presenting this for adoption. As you know, as for the MLUL, it's the planning board, it's under your purview. And, you know, so tonight is where we are presenting the final version. Next slide, please. So community participation. So for example, you know, we conducted an online survey, but that's that to the master plan. It began with general questions and then further broken down into different topics. And this slide, it's a repeat from last time. So we asked, we took the top five responses to find out what was important for the town. So residency to future extreme weather was important. Quality of public school was important. Traffic congestion were a concern expressed. Condition of parks was a concern expressed and also downtown revitalization of it was one of the concerns expressed. So next slide, please. So there were 420 survey participants from a population of a little over 14,000. And we had around 26,000 responses and 2,000 or comments. And we tried to find out who was responding. We asked these questions. 93% were residents, 3% owned a business and also lived in the town. While the remaining 4% which is a small percentage said that they were, it was in the others category. Next slide, please. So it was important to know why Little Falls. And these are the top five answers. They found a home they liked. They have been living in the township for over 20 years. They're close to their family and friends, the character of the community, quality of life. Next slide, please. So whenever we're planning and you're planning for the next 10 years, demographic analysis is important. And we tried to see how the power, how the township has grown. And as you can see from this graphs, there was, there's been a gradual increase in population with a sudden dip during the pandemic, which of course can be attributed to the students who live in the township and affiliated to Montclair State. We also look into the future to see what the projections are and the regional planning association extending New Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, NJTPA, forecast the population to be 16,000, 690 in 2015. It's almost 30 years from now. So it's safe to say that as for their projections, they will be very gradual. Then, next slide, please. So when you're trying to also plan for population characteristics are very important. And as you can see from the age pyramid, it is an aging population, which is very typical to the rest of the country. And when you compare to the actual generation, it's a very, not very, very unique to Little Falls, if I may say, because 27% of the population belongs to Gen Z, which of course can be attributed to the students living in the town. But overall, you can see from the way the pyramid is, it is indeed an aging population. And we also looked at the racial composition. It's somewhat diverse, but 90, 78.9% of the residents are white with others belonging to other races or combination thereof. And we also looked at the income, which is a little higher than the median income. So this is the background study that we did and then moving on to the goals. And again, as for the municipal land use law, goals and objectives and the land use plan are mandatory. When there are other elements, then each plan element is required to have goals and objectives. And we'll be discussing them as progress in this slideshow. But these goals that you see have been developed. This was based upon the review of the prior planning documents. We looked at the existing condition analysis and of course obtained public input. Then these were vetted out with the master plan subcommittee. We had few meetings. And then finally presented in our third community engagement in December to get public input. And finally refined and presented this evening. When you look at the land use issues, right, these are just overarching, you know. And typically during a master planning process, we identify different land use issues. We examine zone districts. And as you all know, it's a predominantly residential township. And the existing single-family districts can continue to remain as such. But there were other land uses that were also analyzed. And once again, all this analysis and was based upon the input obtained from the various township staff, consultants, public engagement session, and our own analysis. And I've just highlighted a few in this presentation. So redevelopment planning. It's a tool that the state through the local redevelopment and housing law enables the municipality to revitalize areas. The conventional zoning doesn't work. And Little Falls has used this successfully in the past. It's a very good tool to promote economic development and revitalization. As you all know, with the, you know, Newark Fountain turnpike, the existing zoning lacks flexibility, given the variances that this board has approved in the past few years. So we made recommendations as to how this area could be revitalized. One of the, one of the input that we had during our master planning committee engagement was the need for have, having a variety of uses in the downtown. So that was something that we looked into. Amending zoning boundaries to better reflect existing uses, eliminate split zoning. And of course, flood hazard areas along the Passaic and Peckman, they're there. And so there are stringent mandatory DEP regulations. But at the same time, it's important to have recommendations for those areas as well, which was covered in the master plan. Next slide, please. So when you look at the residential, there were two data sets that we analyzed. One with the DEP data, which is from 2015, and the more recent property data, which is what, you know, we're just showing both the numbers. But all in all, it's a predominantly residential town, as we all know. And we recommended rezoning, some residential developments that are in the B1 or I zone that would be better suited to, to be located in a residential zone. We also made recommendations to amend zoning boundaries, to follow property lines, and to eliminate split zone laws. Next slide, please. We also looked at the future housing type. And this was, it's there in the appendices. And, you know, there were around 296 respondents, respondents out of the 400-plus people. 296 gave their recommendations. And 83% of those appeared to approve a strongly approved single family. Then the next was senior housing and 43% favored duplexes. So we, yeah, I put four in this, the top three, top three approved types of housing. Next slide, please. Regarding commercial and business, of course, only 16% or 15, you know, based on the property data, it's 15%. Because the DEP data also includes Montclair State, which is not very accurate. So we had to combine, look at two data to get, get our answers. Anyway, again, it's a predominantly residential township, you know. So it's very important to have policies to have, to grow the non-residential or revitalize the commercial areas in a, in a more modern and smart fashion. So we made recommendations to review and revise code to allow for popular and modern uses. Because, you know, the zoning code also allows cell phone exchanges, for example, which is an obsolete use. To update zoning code to allow for medical uses such as urgent care facilities. And to revise the code to revitalize the commercial corridors along Main Street and Newark Fountain. So next slide, please. And then since 2021, every master plan is required to have a climate change vulnerability assessment. And this requires an analysis of a municipality's vulnerability to climate change-related hazards, like increased temperatures, drought, flooding, hurricanes, et cetera. And based on that analysis, these are the main vulnerability issues and recommendations which I've summarized here. I'd mentioned that last time too, to continue working with the county and neighboring municipalities to stabilize the river beds along Peckman, to upgrade the water distribution piping system, to work on mitigation measures to limit the chance of flood damage to the rec facility and DPW facility, to ensure critical facilities have backup generators to do have a debris management plan. Next slide, please. So the master plan has over 50 recommendations, but I did summarize all of them. They're slated to different categories, general, residential, non-residential, vulnerability, et cetera. And so the key land use recommendations are to revise existing land use patterns and the compatibility with the zoning map and make boundary changes. 11 to 15 talks about updates to the zoning code to remove outdated uses and create definitions for popular commercial uses, to amend and clarify sign regulation. We've had so many of these sign variance applications before this board. So you, everyone's well aware of that. And then to evaluate the potential to permit new development along Newark Fountain turnpike, to amend park regulations and permitted to use this for growth and economic development in the downtown area. And to mitigate flood hazard and other natural hazards by implementing infrastructure projects. Next slide, please. So the next plan that we did do was the circulation plan. And circulation and land uses go hand in hand. For example, land uses generate parking needs, generate traffic, and vice versa. So the goal in this master plan was to have all these individual elements tie into each other and were not prepared in a silo. So in terms of circulation goals, there are major three overarching goals with numerous objectives underneath those sections, which was to provide a safe and efficient transportation system, to encourage mobility of all modes and connections to key locations throughout the township. Next slide, please. So transportation trends and issues. We examined how the township travels in terms of different modes, the type of roadways and their classifications throughout the town to identify areas of concern. To, we looked into the regional connections between Little Falls and the neighboring town, Montclair, and other regional initiatives. And it's important because this then gets tied into the sustainability and open space plan that we also examined, or rather wrote. We looked at streetscape guidelines, so that goes back to pedestrian safety. And then we also had downtown parking studied done and recommendations for a downtown area. So next slide, please. So the key circulation issues that were based on the survey was traffic congestion was ranked as very important to, and important, very important to the township. And bicycle and pedestrian safety also was ranked as very important. So next slide, please. So based on all our analysis, we have these key recommendations. The actual master plan has around 52 recommendations. I'm just summarizing here. One is the concerns that were there about pedestrian safety also goes back to the fact that those roads are old under the purview of the county and the state. So our recommendation would be to continue to work with the county and state partners on transportation measures to alleviate congestion. We recommended improving pedestrian safety again through pedestrian infrastructure improvements. Again, you need to work with the county regarding that. But this gives the town, the, how should I say? It gives, these recommendations are important when the town gets into discussion with the different agencies. Implement safety enhancements in streetscape designs when capital improvements are needed to include guidelines for redevelopment plans to improve walking and biking conditions. We, we, we are doing that in our, have we ever done that in our past redevelopment plans? And need to continue to do so to ensure that the township has adequate infrastructure for EV, which again, we've been doing with all our planning efforts. Parking and parking management strategies were set forth in the master plan. So so this is it. And next slide, please. So the next is economic development, where we examine to, to see what recommend, what the goals would be for the township. And really, the existing conditions and the recommendations. So there are three main goals, which is to continue to enhance the downtown as the civic and economic part, to seek stable, high-quality ratables that also reflect favorably upon the image and identity of the townships, and to create a mutually beneficial relationship between Little Falls and Montclair State University. We looked at the, we studied the profile based on the census data. Also looked at the key economic development issues. And again, lack of commercial acreage compared to residential use, which goes back to what I mentioned about getting tied in with the land use plan element. There are utilized properties and commercial corridors in traditional downtown. There's increased, the thing, the trends have changed. So there's increased competition from e-commerce retailers to then the need to create attractive downtowns with walkable amenities, which sort of what we call a placemaking, which creates that identity for the town, which in turn then would attract more businesses. And we have a good, we have a downtown, we have a park close to it, that we have assets in the town that can be capitalized. Next slide, please. We asked the survey what the township could use more of. And this was also asked at the workshop, and it's pretty much very similar. And they had said that there's a need for a variety of restaurants, some retail stores, community green spaces, cultural facilities, maybe an opportunity to have public artwork. And there were other recommendations too, of what this slide does, it shows the top five. Next slide, please. So based on, based on our analysis, based on our fundations with the community, based on discussions with the master plan committee. And we've set forth these recommendations. So one is to develop a creative placemaking strategy that highlights the unique character of Little Falls. We already have started that. We have, we have banners in, you know, on Main Street, but to continue that, to continue, continue that. To review, review the zoning regulations on Route 46 corridor to ensure that this area meets the modern demands of a highway commercial corridor, which kind of ties into the recommendations that we had set forth in the land use plan to continue monitoring macro economic trends, particularly focusing on trends in retail and office spaces, to review regulatory incentives to encourage new mixed-use commercial opportunities in the township in certain areas, to encourage public improvements where it's feasible, and to utilize pedestrian safety improvements along Main Street as an economic development. Next slide, please. It's a sustainability is an important aspect these days in the state of New Jersey. And we set forth a few goals, sustainability goals. And these are the three major ones to implement policies that work with achieving rural and state level climate change, which ties in with our land use plan, which is that mandatory section to improve township's residency and sustainability, and to encourage the utilization of renewable resources. Again, sustainability trends, there's a potential for reducing greenhouse emissions to adopt smart growth principles and EV infrastructure that can help in reducing greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle mileage traveled, increasing frequency and intensity of city of flooding and rainfall events prompts a need for greater stormwater management efforts. So based on our analysis, oh, next slide, please. We have set forth sustainability recommendations. There are around 22 of those. But I'm just going to talk about the key points to consider opportunities to implement green stormwater infrastructure and green streets and capital improvement projects. When, but cost is important. So it's, it's cognizant of that. So when cost effective, to definitely consider that, to consider energy efficiency improvements at municipal facilities, to continue to identify opportunities to install additional EV charging stations at municipally-owned parking lot and high school parking lot, to encourage the use of LEED building practices for new development, redevelopment and building additions, and to continue to work with utility company to replace existing streetlights with downward-facing LEDs. And finally, to update the township's stormwater management plan. The last but not the least, we also looked at the open space and recreation plan element. And in that, of course, there was a public discussion, but we also interviewed our recreation director to get his input. And we spoke to our construction official as well. So there's a lot of input and analysis done for this section as well. And this, we had three main goals to enhance existing parks and open space properties, to create connections between the existing park to farm and open space network, which, as I mentioned, backer bike and pedestrian interconnectivity that we had spoken about in the circulation plan gets tied down in this, in this plan element as well. And to utilize strategic, strategic open space acquisition in environmentally sensitive areas. We spoke, as I mentioned, to got the input from the public and our recreation director. And some of the things that were brought to our Um, and some of the things um, uh, that were brought to our attention was. Limited restrooms, parking spaces and lighting in some township parts. To improve walking, biking connections for existing parks and open spaces. To improve facilities to support a range of ages and abilities. Um, to utilize by, by all properties in the Cineac area as potential future open space. Uh, next, next step. So um, these are the key open space and recreation recommendations. Um, in, in that uh basically. It's to im- implement facility and open space improvements. To add signage at trail crossings, which also goes back to that pedestrian and bicycle safety. Uh, that we discussed in the circulation plan element. To explore potential options for implementing the Cineac Open Space Enhancement Plan. Um, to work cooperatively with county and state agencies to implement flood mitigation measures where available. To upgrade the rec center and food check restrooms to be ADA compliant. And then ten to fifteen of this uh uh. My uh plan element, uh, we uh set forth upgrades to the various uh park facilities. So, next slide please. So we're at the end of this presentation, and uh what are the next steps? The next steps are, then choose to adopt the master plan tonight, and then um. The next would be to implement recommendations over the next ten year period by the governing board. Thank you very much, ready for any questions?
Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions, comments? No comments coming from the board members, who I know have reviewed all two hundred and thirty pages. Thereabout. At this time, um, may I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, meeting is now motion, uh, open to the public, anyone wishing to address us, please come forward. Dylan coming forward, I close the meetings to the public. Um, one more time, any thoughts or comments or questions from the board members? There being none, may I have a motion? Motion being to approve the master plan of the township.
The conference committee has presented.
Adopt the master plan as presented.
Adopt the master plan as presented.
I'll make the motion. May I have a free vote for a vote? Now, so we have ten board members present, but only nine, twenty-nine board members are going to be able to vote.
Okay.
Sorry, who made the motion?
Eric.
Second.
Good, well, please poll the board.
Yes.
Mr. Barash?
Yeah.
Mr. Luc D'Amiano?
Yes.
Ms. Cataldo?
Yes.
Ms. Seber?
Yes.
Mayor D'Amiano?
Yes.
Councilman Scobah?
Yes.
Dr. Happy?
Yes.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Chair of the chair, the master plan for the township of Little Falls is adopted. Uh, it's just a word to our planner and her team in H two M. Uh, thank you very much for all your very strenuous efforts. Little, little more than a year, and uh, it looks great, it's a good master plan.
Thank you so much, and thank, uh, a big thank you to the planning board and the master plan subcommittee for your commitment.
Thank you. I'm gonna call a uh five-minute recess. We are, uh, planning board back to order, our first application is Coric LLC. Just an announcement, if anyone is here for the Nott's Road Jackson Lane LLC uh application, it will not be. Heard tonight, it will be heard in November, and there will be no further public notice.
Okay, November seventh.
On November seventh. Mr. Vettery, we're waiting.
Good evening, everyone, nice to see you, John Vettery on behalf of Coric LLC. Uh, it's part two, it uh, or part, we count one seventy-eight, and the amendment is probably like part five, but uh. So we're here tonight on one ninety-four. So um, as you just passed the resolution approving the shared driveway, this is the application for that property, so. As I think I started to touch upon at the last meeting, the um, the existing property is a, a small multifamily house that's been located there since. Probably the mid nineteen fifties. And the proposal tonight for continuation of um what we're seeing on North Compton Turnpike. With uh mixed-use buildings to provide for um retail and business uses, which are permitted in the zone. But also to provide for uh housing on the upper floors. Earlier plan showed six units. And as we represented at the last meeting, we worked with the architects here this evening. To reduce the uh density down to four. Retail stores uh stay the same, and by doing that, we have eliminated the variance for um for parking. And the, the parking code for the township shows the parking predicated upon the net selling area. We'll have the architect um speak about that. But without the EVSE credit, we have um, we have met the requirement, we need sixteen, we're providing sixteen. With that, we do have a credit, and um, so the site will actually be over parked. We uh asked the architect at the last meeting if there was enough time to put together a uh, you know, what the building would look like, it's very hard to tell in black and white. So we have a nice elevation that we're going to show this evening. So because of the fact that residential is still not permitted in the zone, planner spoke about um, there's some considerations about allowing that. Because of the soft office market, second floor, the third floor office in the downtown is um, is difficult. And we're seeing a trend with offices coming down to the first floor. In fact, um, on the building that this applicant presented and is under construction now, has had interest from uh two financial companies. Edward Jones being one of them uh for that space, because they want to have some prominence, they don't want to be up on the second and third floor. Twenty-three being a great corridor for traffic, gives the ability for insurance companies, lawyers, doctors, graphic artists. Uh, some of uh different service businesses that typically would be on the upper floors, now bringing it down to um, to the ground floor. Which is nice. So tonight we have uh, the primary variance is for this uh D-one variance. So there's the, yeah, there's the elevation of the building, and the D-one variance is simply because residential is not permitted in the B-one zone. So that's the primary variance. We also have uh bulk variances that we're going to go through, uh, some of which have been made a lot better because of the new shared drive. But uh, but there are still some variances that persist for uh minimum side yard setback, for the front door setback. And also for the three-story building, whereas two and a half stories is required. Uh, the variance was picked up at the last meeting by the planner with respect to the parking setback from the back, whereas five feet is required. And we have a deviation for that as well. And finally, there's a pre-existing non-conformity for the mean lot depth. You need a hundred feet, and I think we're just shy of a hundred feet, so there's a technical uh pre-existing non-conformity for that. So our lineup this evening is going to be David Santina, who's going to testify in the area of engineering. Uh, Dave had the opportunity to speak with the board engineer tonight to discuss the drainage. Drainage is always difficult, we've had this on every application on Route twenty-three, it's, it always winds up being a challenge. And um, we're gonna let Dave give the testimony, but I'll just give you a little precursor to it in that. Um, it looks like the originally planned um drainage and stormwater management is the preferable way to go. So luckily, that engineering had been done already, those drainage calculations had been done, there's still some additional work to do. Um, if the board sees fit to do this, we'd like, if we were able to conclude this evening. Um, we would uh ask the board to make it a condition of approval that we meet the satisfaction of your engineer with regard to the engineering. And it would be very similar to what we've done on a host of applications um on North Compton Turnpike. Aside from, aside from the uh engineering, we also have with us the architect Adam Sota, who prepared these beautiful plans. Also the same architect who prepared the plans for eighty-two, eighty-four North Compton, next to Holy Angels. And finally, uh, Nick Graviano, who is a professional planner, is going to testify with respect to the D-one variance as well as the um, the C variances that are required. So that's the overview of uh, of what we're doing this evening, and I'm going to bring up our first witness, David Fantina, to testify in the area of engineering.
Fantina, do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give before this court is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please tell us your name, Spireless, and give us your address for the record.
David Fantina at Fessen Frank, T and T I N A, fifteen Sunset Drive, Bernadetteville, New Jersey. And I'm still a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, my license is still in good standing.
Are all your licenses up to date?
Yes, they are.
Okay, your credentials are quite accepted and welcome back.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Dave. Look, uh, great to give you a overview of your plans, and I have the uh letters from both professionals and law firms.
Okay, uh, essentially, um, the plan you see up here to my right, uh, I've got the, the site plan open there. And the building to the right was approved uh at the last meeting. Building to the left, which is lot eight, is the one that we're talking about, but the two sites are obviously um combined, because we are. Uh, proposing the shared driveway in and out between the two buildings, and there'll be uh cross easements for that and everything. On the, on lot eight, what we're proposing is a building with fifteen hundred and seventy-three square feet of retail space. That number is about sixty-three square feet larger than is shown on my plans. But we discussed with the architect, fifteen seventy-three is the actual amount of retail space in the new building. Uh, in addition to that, there will be four uh two-bedroom apartments on second and third floors. That means that will require eight parking spaces for the residences, eight for the commercial. Sixteen uh parking spaces are required. We have sixteen parking spaces that are totally on lot eight. There's a seventeenth that straddles the lot line, we're not taking credit for that with this application. In addition to that, we will have EV-ready spaces, which will give us uh an additional bonus. So we have uh ample parking now, that the decision has been made to reduce from six residential buildings. Uh, residential units to four. Uh, there are variances, and I'll just run through them very quickly. Uh, the ten-foot front yard is required, about two-point-one-six feet, which obviously is in keeping with the approved building to the south. The side yard will be twelve feet, and we're requesting nine-point-nine-nine. I should point out that the nine-point-nine-nine is against, probably also owned by the architect. There is twelve feet uh provided against the neighboring property. We're uh proposing a three-story building, where only two and a half stories is allowed, and I'll let the architect uh talk about that a little more depth. The lot depth, uh, one hundred feet is required, and it is ninety-six-point-eight-three, there's nothing we can do about that. And as your planner mentioned, I think at the last meeting, the parking setback needs to be five feet, and against the rear line, we're only slightly more than, than two feet. That's a listing of the, of the bulk variances. But I think the, the main thing for me to talk about may be the drainage, because uh, when I submitted these plans uh for last meeting. We did have positive outflow from the detention basin. We have a very, very large underground detention basin, straddles both the property lines, uh, both the properties. And there'll be cross easements for, for maintenance of that. We had a positive drain at the bottom of that, which was running down, is going to run down Newark Compton Turnpike to an inlet. However, my client and I, uh, he asked me to change that, because we would have had to have crossed several gas lines. So I changed uh the nature of that, but Mr. Kobelars pointed out, and I think correctly, that the original design was actually better than the revised design. So we're agreeing to go back to the original design with the proviso that instead of running the drainage down Newark Compton. We're going to be tying into an existing storm sewer in the middle of Newark Compton Turnpike. I ran that by Mr. uh Kobelars, and uh without putting words in his mouth, he said that would be approvable, and it was certainly preferable to the. To the alternate uh detention system that we had come up with.
I may, Jack, just for the benefit of the board members, the applicant has withdrawn. Um, his uh desire to, excuse me, to um. Have the surface be permeable in grain, and he has reverted back to the original. Concept, which is to have the uh grain into Route twenty-three, drainage system. So we have actually reverted back, Mr. Vettery, to the art engineers, August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four report.
That's correct, and the drainage calculations were submitted based on the prior design.
Um, Mr. Kobelars, do you accept that?
I do, it's much better designed, having a positive uh outflow for the detention base.
Okay, so that issue has been addressed and resolved, thank you.
Okay, okay, uh, other than that, um, we're gonna have HBAC units on, on, on the roof, the architect can talk about that. Uh, but we think the, the uh property will work extremely well, especially in conjunction with, with the, the property next door. These two will, will be tied in very uh, very, very nicely, they'll, they'll function very well. And as you can see by the picture, uh, it's certainly going to be a very attractive building.
Hey, Greg, wouldn't you be from the last plan, that plan you moved the dumpster?
I did.
Where the dumpsters, that's probably. Dumpster had been uh located surrounding the lot line, uh, someone pointed out that the first thing you saw moving the site, if you like that. We moved it all the way to the north, it'll be uh, the dumpster enclosure in this location, kind of, kind of out of view. And the recommendations that were made with regard to fencing and landscaping, those are all acceptable?
Absolutely, yes.
Understand that particular aspect will have to be issued by the county DOT with respect to the drainage.
Drainage and access, yes.
For the access per cut.
Mr. Vettery, are you viewing the engineer's report?
Yes.
Where are you?
So I am uh looking on page seven of ten. It's actually page of ten. No, I'm sorry, I'm on page of ten of the plan.
This only has five pages, so we're having trouble following you.
Yeah, eight of ten, I'm just looking from the manager.
You're on the planner's, engineer's?
Yep, no, I'm on, I'm currently on the planner's.
Can you go to engineer?
Go to the engineer.
Absolutely.
We'll get to our planner in a minute, I don't want you to feel less than. We'll get to you in a minute.
Let, let me say that.
I'm sorry, I thought Mr. Vettery was just trying to see if there are any engineering comments within the planning.
There's some soon in this report, also, so it's okay. We've um, we talked about the dumpster, the landscaping.
So let me just, uh, in terms of the dumpster, is that dumpster still going to be shared between the two buildings, one ninety-four and one ninety-eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there will be easements for, of course, as we discussed in the last meeting for one ninety-eight, there's going to be easement for the shared driveway. There's going to be an easement, because I believe space number nine straddles the lots, even though it is uh going to be used for this application. So we have sixteen spaces here, we always had twelve on the other application, the building didn't change, and so twelve that stays the same. Uh, so it will be an easement for that, and there'll also be an easement and a sharing agreement with respect to it. So this way, if they're ever severed, if the property is ever severed, you never have to worry about that, that both parties have the right.
Uh, Mr. Vettery, if it's gonna allow you a better flow of the meeting, you want to continue with the planner's report?
The only other thing I had on the, on the planner's report. And our planners here are going to address.
I was gonna say, I didn't know Mr. Fantina was a planner, I was very surprised.
Did you talk about um, Brandon Block hurt, as I know Mr. Careman prefers as well, we're in agreement uh with that. Uh, it's a comment about PTA, we're in agreement with that. This is exact from the State County, but we will ask for a letter of no interest, and we will be filed with the Hudson Essex for Safe Soil Conservation District. David spoke about the APAC units, that will be on the roof, the architect will be with us as well, there'll be a parapet there, so that we don't see them. David spoke about APAC units that will be on the roof. The architect will be with us as well. It'll be a paragraph there so that we don't see them. Free up some space around.
Go into the into the drywall, yes, not a drywall, I mean, identity ground protection system.
Sam, Sam, move the microphone for.
Actually, you were on page eight. I'd made comments about the crashed enclosure. So will you be providing that?
Yes.
Okay. And then we'd also mentioned that you're providing a row of dunipers, but that also to provide a privacy fence.
Absolutely, we'll do that.
Okay.
Sam, do you have any other comments?
I think some of which are probably the architect and the planner can answer, but there's one other. We had spoken about the off-street loading. You'd require a variance from that, right? Because you you're not providing any off-off off-street loading space.
That is correct.
Okay.
How does that going to work? I have an Amazon package coming in. How do I get it?
On the street, smaller buildings like this that are not heavy buildings, you find in practice that it works a lot better. Not to have a space that sits empty almost all day and to let someone that's parking. Park on one of the available spaces that an empty dog would be able to fit in. One of these spaces would have, you know, a full twenty-four foot driveway aisle. To allow for the truck to navigate better than your prior plan. We got the one ninety-eight, which was the horseshoe around the building. So there's ample room for the truck. To get into the site.
Would have to pull into a nine by twenty?
Yeah.
Anybody know how wide or? FedEx or?
It's no wider than that. Some of the vehicles are longer.
At least the doors slide back so they won't be bumping into cars. So I guess that's it.
If the board would like, I mean, you could dedicate one of the spaces of the board. I think we have one free space with the EVS eight, so we only need fifteen.
I'm not asking for that. Sam, anything else?
Yes, so I had, let's see. On page nine, I'd asked about the driveway aisle egresses onto the northbound side of Newark Compton Turnpike. It's a busy intersection, so just to provide testimony. That, you know, cars can safely make a left turn or are you going to just have right turn only?
I think that would, we would have to defer that to the NJDOT. Our plan is that it would be right turn and left turn.
Okay.
But the DOT may have something to say about that.
Okay.
An egress, are you going to allow left turn?
Yes, I I think we would like to, subject to DOT approval.
And are you proposing any signage for the, I mean, I know the business will have a signage, but for the building itself, are you proposing any signage?
No, present.
Okay.
Let me ask you this, and do you agree to everything that is in the August seventh, twenty-seventh report of our planner?
One other, I'm sorry, the last one. The resolution for one ninety-eight Newark Compton stipulated that the store shall have a nine p.m. per Q on any day. That commercial businesses are open to the public, so I'm assuming it carries to this as well.
Yeah.
And then there will be no overnight parking of vehicles on this one as well, correct?
Overnight vehicles, commercial vehicles.
Yes, right. No, of course, the residents.
Can we move on to the engineer's report?
Yes, I could. I could just go through the engineer's report.
The engineer's report of August?
August twenty-seven.
Correct.
And starting at the bottom of page two, technical comments. The survey, if it has not been already been submitted, will be submitted. Key map will be modified to show zoning districts. We will certainly note that all curb and sidewalk will be replaced along the frontage. We'll correct the the block number. Calculation of sanitary sewer flows is very simple. We'll provide that. We mentioned the architectural plans, the updated architectural plans, the actual retail space is fifteen seventy-three, I believe is the number. Fifteen seventy-three. So we'll modify our plan. The architect's plan was actually modified after ours was printed. We'll modify ours to match.
The coordinate was not that. So fifteen seventy-three is the net. When you take out the staircase and you take out the storage room in the back, that's the, that is the net. We do have the door of the bike, it didn't print out, it shows that. If you think it would be helpful, it's, it is. Those are the numbers, you know, the calculation is based upon the net of the place.
Seven and eight require.
Mr. Chairman, would the board like the exhibit or is the testimony sufficient?
I'm sorry.
I have an exhibit just showing the architect repairs, showing the gross and the net.
Great one. Are we through with the engineer? You want that to be part of the architect's?
Because it does, it impacts the.
Doesn't extensive it?
Yeah.
Chair, maybe for the record, the artist's rendering. Of the building, we should mark that A one and we can mark this A two.
A two, John.
In the meantime.
Okay, so you said this was A two. A two is an exhibit that was prepared by the architect, the gross and net. More area where the retail. Yeah, no, no, that's all I'm remarking is it's it's that was not, this was not, the plans only show the gross, they never showed them. But when you're looking at that, you'll see the the total on the top number is the gross. Bottom number is the net backing out staircase, the bathroom, the storage room. So the net sales area is one thousand five hundred and seventy-three square feet. Under the code, we need one space for every two hundred square feet. That comes out to seven point eight six five. We rounded it up to eight. And the calculation for the apartments, it's easy, it's four units at two per unit. So that's eight and eight, sixteen. And we got a credit of one space for the EVS. So the total required parking, actually, we get the ten percent credit.
Ten percent, but are you providing, because that then calculates to two point four. So are you providing three? How many EV spaces are you proposing? It is fifteen percent, right, fifteen percent of sixteen is, I think, two point four. So because section two eighty-one twenty-five says you up it, so it becomes three. So and then of course. No, that's the RSIS, the RSIS, but the actual ordinance, I'm basing it on memory. Two, yes, two eighty dash one ninety-five, it says, if it's a fraction, it becomes one whole.
So which is fine, their EV, my concern is that their EVS make ready space, doesn't mean that they're from the get-go, they're going to be.
I get that, right.
Because maybe we're just not there yet to have three dedicating spaces for a relatively small parking lot, but that we would agree to the fifteen percent. That they're made.
Right, I mean, I, it's up to the board if they think two is, you know, it's there for argument, but I'm just.
For the benefit of the board members, can you put that into English?
I, my record would gain to be no more than two, I think. For something, for a small building like this, we can always, we can always add them. There's regulations change, we can always add them.
I I don't disagree with you, John. I'm just telling you what the ordinance is. I don't disagree. I think it makes sense. That's why I said I leave it to the board.
So would two require a variance?
I, in, it kind of would be a variance because, and it's a technical one, because it's two point four. Which is really.
All right, we can't, we can't deal, we can't deal with kind of what we, the absolute.
Yes, two point four would be a variance because of, as I quoted, the section of the ordinance.
So the ordinance.
Says if it's a fraction, you round it out.
You round it up, okay.
Yes.
We'll do whatever the board likes. If the board would rather see three, they create spaces, we'll be free to prefer two, then we will ask for the variant for the one space.
What's the total amount of parking spaces?
Sixteen.
And what's required?
Thought two and a half.
Okay, but you need, you have sixteen, you need sixteen.
Right, right, right.
You get an exemption because it's fine, as as you have it now.
Go ahead, two, two EV ready spaces. So that's another variance that we'll. Continuing with the engineer's letter, seven and eight have to do with some additional dimensions and. Various things that need to be added to the plans. We take no exception to that. Item nine talks about a sign that was shown originally on Route twenty-three that was shown on the survey. It's no longer there, so we've taken it off the plans. Item ten, we we said granite block curbing will dislocate it. Item eleven has to do with the curve along the NJDOT right of way. We agree with that. Item twelve, we need to improve the Hudson Essex Safe Soil Conservation District. Item thirteen has to do with a. In the driveway, we'll take that and. Address that to Mr. Kobelars's satisfaction, same with number fourteen. Item number fifteen will provide the agreement information that he's requiring. Item number sixteen is no longer really applicable with the fact that we're no longer running the drainage line down. Down Newark Compton Turnpike, so that's not really applicable anymore. Item seventeen, eighteen, nineteen have to do with utility plans. We'll we'll agree to provide that information. Item twenty, we talked about where the HBAC units are going on the roof. Item twenty-one has to do with more information on the lighting plan, which we're happy to provide. Item twenty-two or some landscaping changes which we will make. Item twenty-three, I requiring some additional construction details, which we will do. Item twenty-four, an operation maintenance manual. I thought we had submitted one, but if not, we'll certainly provide one. And item twenty-five is a map to go with the drainage calculations and we'll certainly provide that.
And item twenty-one, the lighting plan, what kind of lighting are you going to have on the building? Is it going to be a form of gooseneck or something else?
So it's a famous return of the architect is going to see to that as shown on the elevations.
It's in the engineer report.
Yeah, I think that is.
Yeah.
Not the back, the front.
Yeah, it's funny, we have some holes up which are, which will provide more information.
Is there going to be any type of gooseneck fitting?
Yes, they're shown, they're shown on the plans. There's one on top of the one ninety-four that's shown on the elevation. I think we marked that as a, that be one.
Are those those five black things on top?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay. One final.
Yes, one comment, remarks item sixteen, you read of in that paragraph. Second half relates to pipe system instead of going along Route forty-three. Connects to the center of, which is what you're proposing now. So it does the comment.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And and the last last sentence there is that either alternative requires NJDOT. Your approval, which the whole project does, and we agree with that.
That it?
That's all I have.
Let me ask you this question. Does the applicant agree to everything that has been discussed in testimony to the engineer report? Thank you. And you have another, any questions to the engineer? No? Go ahead.
Regarding the detention system. As it was just explained, that it will be discharged into the sewer system on Route twenty-three. Will the system also permeate into the ground at all?
It will not.
Will not strictly be detention, right? Okay, thank you.
How large is the detention tank? Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Anything else, continue.
Do we want to open to the public or wait for the end?
Get away from the end.
Our next witness is the architect, I'm sorry, yes, the architect, Adam Lasota. Going to testify.
So did you swear from the testimony that you're about to give before this board is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please tell us your name, Spireless, if you can give us your address.
Yes, it's Adam Lasota, L A S O T A. And my address is twenty-four twenty-four East York Street. Unit two fifteen in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
We're going to be roomed out, except that here's professional, most of the floor, but please be the roster of your professional education.
Yes, great to see you all back. I graduated from NGIT, two thousand twelve, the art professional bachelor's of architecture. Then got licensed in twenty eighteen in the state of New Jersey, subsequently I picked up a number of licenses in other states. Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, and Indiana, and all my licenses are active and in good.
Indiana?
Indiana. That's that's a new one from last time.
Yes, I truly don't recall that.
There's a good project in another state, then I will happily oblige. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the board. Great to see you all again. Here we have another addition on to Newark Compton Turnpike. As you see here, we did create visualization, a rendering of the front facade in order to. Show some more visual interests and kind of some changes that we did. There's some slight changes here than what was previously submitted, but just to go over it and it's okay.
What we propose here is that we did a, a little bit more in character with the neighborhood, similar to a lot of the other developments, but with some slight variations and not have same not. From current factor all along and downward. So what we propose here is, of course, the ground floor is the two retail units. As I specified earlier, there was a correction from gross versus net for footage. So we have just two primary retail tenants, you know, one on the left, one on the right. Again, we wanted to propose a brick along the ground floor, or to anchor it onto the ground name along the street, especially with the fact that we have. That two point one four front setback. So we want to make sure to anchor it and create a good street presence along our retail front. We want to propose a nice sign band that kind of helps to provide that. Almost at a corner sign, and it's a nice sign band for what we're proposing. Along the entrances and above the entrances along that sign band, of course, just. That's creative delivery in terms of naming, but of course, we'll make sure that those sinages are not sublimated. They are. In similar styles, we're proposing a black lettering, a race lettering that's not illuminated along that white sign band. And we'll make sure that size would be followed the order considered of our signage. And of course, we have the one ninety-four plaque, we have this plaque. And all three of these are illuminated by, not goosenecks, but they're going to be downward, small sconces, which gives you quite a little bit of illumination along the signage. But also for the store frontages, we're proposing black storefronts and proposing up and down wall sconces again, just to provide a better street presence for that. And then the second and third floor, it is a three-story building. We are trying to play some artificial trickery again here with. Have the building look as a two and a half story by having a prominent corner sign. Between the second and third floors and having a series of the formers that stick out. Give it a look, provide some trickery, and then we'll be solving that for, you know, to create a better street presence and not necessarily monolithic. Three-story, you know. Give it a look, provide some trickery and like some re-solving backwards, in order to create a better street presence and not actually monolithic, three-story, you know, straight wall building. Uh, here, we're trying to play with colors and some contrast here. I think that with the color visualization, it's a little bit easier to see than the black and white ones that were submitted. Uh, here we're showing a hardy siding across the front, uh, in a kind of dark red color. And again, we're showing uh, you know, basement windows, long as the transalines are gonna be black with some white trim work. Or playing some visual trickery here in the middle, see it's kind of like blacked out area. That's the dividing uh wall between the two units. Again, similar to that, retail is on the ground floor. Uh, the second floor and third floor units are positioned are here images of each other, uh, with that division kind of break down. We'll go through the drawings. Here we're trying to show platform goes with the white trend, give some contrast, but again, we didn't want to put the same black uh trend, black paneling on that third floor with the dormers because of the fact that it was just getting dark. So we want to propose a kind of a lighter element and a kind of seed of darker asphalt chambers that we're proposing on that third story. Um, so we can bring up the drawings too.
Before we do, uh, the lighting on the bottom corner. Now, this is the signage.
Uh, the, those are just those small uh downward basis sconces that are sort of.
Do you put any kind of a gooseneck on them?
Well, we were thinking of something, the nuisance are quite large and intrusive.
Oh, they don't have to be. There's time.
There's, we, for this building with simplicity, we're thinking of just maybe small little kind of sconces that go out of the other way. We, if you'd like, we can provide something of a gooseneck. I would just caution about doing anything too big because we're trying to go something a little bit more like minimalistic, a little bit more modern.
We're looking for minimalist, but we're just looking for a design. We'd like to have that designing or a new moving.
Okay. Yeah, we're, we're happy to amend that, be able to provide that.
You, you can, you can dig the gooseneck above, but because the one ninety-four is on the side.
Yes, we can provide a gooseneck, maybe position them a little bit higher, maybe they would attach not on the side edge of ripper, or just pop in or what the siding is. Just trying to get it high enough so it's not actually blocking.
I think what Mr. Vetter may be saying is have the sconce lights where they are and just put a gooseneck over the one ninety-four. Is that what you're thinking?
And, and also the signage, like the area where you got the lettering for the sconce.
Yeah.
So we got will be the appropriate.
Them are all on the same page?
Yeah, so instead of the three smaller ones, we can move them up and provide a gooseneck.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We want a small one. We don't want still falling on anybody's head.
Right, I agree. So you were charged with admission of coming up with this in less than a month, as we were here on uh September fifth, I think it was, and we got this done, but the footprint had to change. Part seven, so we just wanted to just explain that, but we'll get into the floor plans and about the, the addition of the windows and stuff.
No, absolutely. I think we show uh the side elevation here slightly in visualization. There is a window here, it's equal on the other side. It's that right side, we use the floor plan, so we don't have them printed, I think we can see them all.
Before we get to the interior, um, I'd like to, do any board members have any thoughts on the blackout in the middle? I know it's for architectural to stand out, but any thoughts on?
Is, is that going to be a glass, is that going to be glass in nature, or is it going to be some sort of just dark?
It's going to be a black painted panel, so similar to that, how we do a panelized system up on the uh dormers. We would provide kind of a black panel here to equal or, you know, see the same look of a, the icon of a window, because we're doing white windows along the second floor. And it's because the, the mining law can use it right now. So in order to provide, in order for us to kind of break up the language of just these kind of, you know, double cases with ransom, we wanted to do another triple, we do there, it's called, break it up.
I'm not hearing any real objections, so. Uh, my only other, I'd like you to give testimony to this, was that you will build what we're seeing. The brick, the hardy board, also.
Okay.
And not the EV. Unless you have an issue that you can't do something. You agree to that, Mr. Vetter?
Yes. Yeah, we're, uh, we're happy to, because we want to make sure that what we're showing here in terms of the elevation, and make sure that the materials and the factors, of course, picture.
You have the latitude.
Yes, we hold sixty materials in this part of town.
So, well, if one other, if one other item that I think is not going to, that the applicant was pointing out to me, so the area that you're seeing up on the screen right now, I'm not sure of page that it, but um in practice, that's not the way the other building was built. It would look more attractive, build that in with bricks, so that's not going to be, so that, that would be.
Are you on the bottom?
Yeah.
Oh.
One other, um, I'm sorry. I, I.
Go ahead.
If I may.
Feel free to hop in, Sam.
I'm sorry?
Feel free to hop in.
Thank you. Um, I had actually commented uh on page eight, uh, comment number eleven that um, that you're proposing a bland facade along the sides, both of which would be visible from Newark, Compton, Turnpike, is similar to what you had done two months ago. I had the same comment that, you know, to consider really brightening, uh, bracketing up and limiting that facade. So.
Yeah, so actually the, what is shown on the screen there is the last page of the architect, it was just the side elevation.
Yeah, title, page, page five on the submitted.
Yeah, that side elevation is incorrect, or there's a window on, on the side, so you actually.
One or?
Just one in the middle, yeah. You scrolled uh to the third page of the document, which has the second floor thing. So if you scroll a little bit more, that's the third floor, walk one more.
Yeah, that's.
So you can see in the living rooms, yeah, that window right there, so there is a window on the side. So there's gonna be a window and also a dormer on the side there, on both sides. So we'll add some visual interest, so it won't just be blank wall, blank.
So a dormer on the second floor and third floor as well, or just third?
The dormer would be on the third floor, which would align with the window below. So similar to the style of the dormers on the front elevation, that will, that language will carry to the side and also to the rear as well. So the floor plans are correct, the elevations are incorrect, so we apologize for that.
Are you gonna correct?
Of course.
Okay.
Yes. But we wanted, as special testimony, yes, we will be providing that window that is roughly centered on the side elevation, both on the second floor, and provide a dormer that lines up with that for the third.
That's good, which we recommended and approve of.
On both sides, yeah. So we'll be on the side facing the driveway and on the uh side where the side are.
And on the left and right elevation shown on uh page, page five of the plans, that area that's probably open there will be filled in with the same uh facade on the grid.
Yep.
Stop being shown.
Yeah, so we will have that uh lower brick kind of wing scoting that is shown on the elevation there, but we will carry it on to provide a solid sidewall on both elevations. And of course, as shown on the renderings, there, there are areas of greenery of, you know, between the uh driveway and also between the sidewalk and the, and the front wall, there is gonna be a series of shrubs and some landscaping there as well.
Do we have that on a plane?
That is part of the, that is part of David's painting, yes. We added a tree there because it looks like a street tree there.
Looks nice.
So yeah, and then just to go through the floor plans again, uh, the first floor, you see the uh two uh retail units uh with those uh storefront indent for the entryway. Helps give a little bit of a covering before you enter into those retails, um, and the parking spaces behind it. And if you go to the next page, you'll see.
The indent, one thing I just, oh, but then one that the reason for the indent is just to create something different than one seventy-eight and one ninety. Make this look distinct, different finishes, different lines, different trim, and that is everything.
And then on the, the second and third floors are very similar in nature because they're mirror images of each other. You actually should draw a line from, you know, plant north to south. It, it, they are mirror images of each other with some small tweaks. So we're proposing all the kitchens and the living spaces, the, the main, uh, more, I guess, public parts of an apartment where most of the time they hang, they live, that's facing the street side versus the bedrooms are gonna be at the rear of the property, so pull them away a little bit from Newark, Compton Turnpike, so although the avenue can be quite busy, so it's nice to have the bed kind of farther away from the, the street traffic. So that same floor plan as you're seeing here on the screen, um, the second floor, and then the third floor mimics it, uh, with just the caveat that the edges around the perimeter ceiling will be sloped in order to accommodate um the change in visual interest to kind of provide that, again, like I said, architectural respective trickery in that, trying to have to build it up for the man's heart roofing that we're showing on the elevation, and of course on the.
How do the occupants of the second and third floor get to their apartment?
Sorry?
How do the applicants enter into the building to get to their apartment's elevator or strictly stairs?
No, it's just gonna be one staircase that's gonna be accessed from the rear of the property. So as you can see on the first floor plan, um, there's gonna be a sidewalk. Uh, they're gonna enter into a small lobby where they'll have their mailroom, and then from there, there'll be a, a switchback staircase that leads up to the second and to the third floor.
Thank you.
And yeah, that's, uh, presentation, thank you.
So you got?
That's all I got.
Yeah, uh, no further questions?
Any questions to the board, comments? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the board.
Okay, our next witness is Nick Graviano, going to testify in the area of planning.
You swear from the testimony that you're about to give before this board? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please tell us your names, spell your last name, give us your address.
Yes, my first name is Nicholas with an H, last name Graviano, G R A, V as in Victor, I A N O. I am a partner and planner with Graviano and Gillis Architects and Planners with a business address of one zero one Crawford's Corner Road in Holmdel, New Jersey. Yes, I hold a bachelor's degree from Rutgers University, a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University.
Was that the name of the university?
Excuse me?
What's the name of the university? You went very fast.
Oh, I went to undergraduate and graduate school at Rutgers University.
Okay.
I went to law school at Temple University School of Law. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been qualified by this board before, as well as over a hundred boards in, in eighteen different counties.
One question, are your licenses all active?
Yes, Chairman.
Your credentials are quite acceptable. Welcome back.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
I'll keep this brief. The professionals before me did a great job of setting up the application. I know the board's very familiar with the site. Uh, the applicant is before this board this evening requesting uh preliminary and final site plan approval, as well as a D one use variance and C variances for a specific piece of property known as Block thirty-seven, Lot eight. Uh, that's the product, properties on the eastly side of Newark, Compton Turnpike. Uh, the site presently contains a multifamily dwelling. Property is located in the B one general business zoning district, which permits a wide array of commercial uses. But as you heard Mr. Vetterie state in his intro, the multifamily use is not permitted, uh, hence the applicant's request for the D one variance before you this evening. Um, as you heard in architectural testimony, the applicant is proposing two commercial units on the ground floor, as well as four two-bedroom apartments on the second and third floor. Um, as you all know, this property is surrounded by a mixture of small-scale commercial uses, low and medium-density uh residential development, so it's certainly a proposal which is in keeping with the established uh land use pattern of the area. Uh, when we look at the D one variance, the board has the power to grant such variance in particular cases and for special reasons. That's the positive criteria of the D one variance. Uh, New Jersey courts have held that promotion of the general welfare is the zoning purpose, which most clearly amplifies the meaning of that term, special reasons. Now, this applicant does not need to demonstrate that there are other viable locations within the municipality to accommodate this use, just that this site itself has particular characteristics uh that make it appropriate for such use. Uh, the applicant must also uh demonstrate that the negative criteria is satisfied, that relief could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. It will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. In terms of the particular suitability, why is this a rational site for proposed use? It's located amongst other commercial and mixed-use buil- buildings, both existing and under construction. It's on a roadway which is on New Jersey Transit Bus Routes eleven and one ninety-five with great access to Newark, as well as the city. Additionally, it's point seven miles or a fifteen-minute walk to the Little Falls train station, so it's an area that's served by transit. Uh, looking at the advancement of the municipal land use law, it certainly advances purpose A to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of lands in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. This is a new mixed-use building built to current standards. Uh, it eliminates an existing dwelling where the driveway backs out onto the turnpike. So this is an orderly and, and rational configuration to have motorists safely enter and exit the site. Additionally, it advances purpose E, promotion of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons and neighborhoods. It also advances purpose G to provide sufficient space in an appropriate location for a variety of commercial and residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. Then lastly, through the impeccably designed engineering and architectural plans, it certainly promotes a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. It creates a very attractive uh streetscape by putting the building on the sidewalk. The parking is shielded in the rear, so it's not highly visible from the turnpike, so it's certainly a desirable visual environment for the corridor. Uh, in terms of the negative criteria, there's certainly no substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. It also advances the four-prong Medici test, which is site suitability. Uh, I gave the reasons for the particular suitability, the special reason certainly promotes purposes A, E, G, and I. There will be no public impact, heard engineering testimony that the site will flow, function, and operate safely. Um, in terms of the zone plan impact, this is a very modest project. There's no substantial impact to the zone plan. And looking at the twenty thirteen master plan on page five, there are objectives to encourage more intensive development in areas that are adequately served by transportation facilities. This is certainly one of those sites. And then additionally, the master plan on page six seeks to plan for efficient and proper redevelopment of areas of transition. Uh, moving on to the C variances, uh, there are C variances required by this application. The first one relates to lot depth. Uh, that is an existing condition, not created by this application. Certainly could be granted under the C one criteria, whereas strict application of the municipality zoning ordinance would create undue hardship upon the applicant before you this evening. There are also uh variances required for front yard setback, side yard setback. A building height in relation to stories, two and a half is permitted, three is proposed. Uh, the applicant has eliminated the need of the variance for the parking spaces by reducing the two units. Uh, needs the parking setback variance, the stall size variance, as well as stated previously, the variance for the lack of a loading dock. Um, certainly, uh, a building of this type can accommodate loading through one of the parking spaces, the rear parking area. Um, all of the rest of those variances could be granted under the C two criteria, whereas hardship need not be demonstrated or must be demonstrated that it relates to a specific piece of property, and a, and the purposes of the municipal land use law are advanced by the application. Uh, similarly to the D one analysis, uh, the C variance certainly advanced purposes of zoning A, E, G, and I without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Nicely done. Uh, Sam, do you have any comments on? I guess the question is, do you agree with all the variances, or are there any additional changes due to various upgrades?
No, no, I agree, uh, and I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions to the board, any comments? Okay.
Thank you, Board.
Uh, is that your last, uh?
Yes, that's our final.
At that point, this point, then I would like to open the meeting to the public. May I have a motion? May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meeting is now open to the public. Anyone wishing to address to the board, address the board, a comment, you step forward. No one's stepping forward, I close the meeting with a public. Mr. Vetter?
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Just uh some brief summary remarks um about this um application, and just some observations. Um, as we've seen in the past, I think Chairman, you were the only one um that's sitting on the dais now that was here when we did the um Kramer application at seventy East Main Street with the shared driveway with Vanderwind and um.
That worked.
It works very, very well. We, we saw that a couple of months ago, or a few months ago, with the DL development, having that, um, sometimes you can't do it. Um, like this one seventy-eight application, that will work fine, but this is really. Sometimes you can't do it like this one seventy eight application that will work fine, but this is really, this is ideal and it opens up the site and it will allow for, I think, better retailers. It's nice to have an opportunity. These are tight spots on Route twenty three, which on this side of twenty three. On the other side, on the western side, they're deeper. But I think we're able to accomplish a building that will work very well. I think our, the applicants, professionals have demonstrated that you know, building a building in conformity with the zone would be a building that is going to be for rent and for lease consistently, having, you know, a significant amount of upper floor office space. Perhaps at some point that will get changed and it will, you know, lessen the need for these type of variants, at least for the use variant. Probably we still wind up having a lot of the, a lot of the bulk variances. And, you know, in a way, I feel there's like a little bit of a healthy competition between the Main Street Zone Business District and the Route twenty three Compton Avenue District. And I'm not here to say who's winning or losing, but we see two oh eight Newark Compton, the PAPIS application, that's ready for demolition this week. And eighty two eighty four may have filed for demolition permits already and thirty dash thirty eight, we'll see if that's coming. So there's just a lot of progress in this area that is, is nice to see because it's a long period of time where we didn't see this kind of activity. And it is nice to see with the additional residential development that's happening across the street and the existing very nice single-family neighborhood on Strickland and Grove and that whole neighborhood. This gives them now an opportunity to walk to the downtown, to have different things as opposed to just a mix of, you know, two and three family houses that were previously there. I think that we've addressed, you know, all of the concerns of the, of the board and the board professionals. I think our planner did a great job of defending the variances that we do have, some of which we just could not, we could not avoid. And I think this will be a very elegant addition, a continuation, and something that looks different. You don't want to see cookie cutter buildings going up and down. And this architect who's newly retained to the project, I think, did a very good job of, of making it look different. We like what's there at one seventy eight. And I think that that looks really nice, but this is, this is now a bigger building. We didn't shrink the footprint. So it's a bigger building. It's a more prominent building. And I think it will fit into that area very well. Are there any further questions? We are still here to answer any questions and hope the board sees fit to approve this application. Again, thank you. Thank you, professionals.
Thank you. I do have to comment on your comments concerning the fact that your Compton Turnpike is now part of the conversation with development in Little Falls. A pleasure to see.
Agreed.
Any further questions to board? Comments? Mike Cobalars, anything?
Nothing further.
Done?
Nothing.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the application be approved for lot eight, which is address one ninety four Newark Compton Turnpike. And the application requires a D variance for residential use on the plot. Also, a C variance for minimum side yard setback where let's see, twelve feet is required and nine point nine nine feet is requested. Another C variance for three stories where two, a maximum of two stories is permitted. I, I believe the parking spaces was resolved, so no variance is needed for that.
That's correct.
Correct? Oh, I, I'll get to the EV. Yes, thank you. Parking setback of, it's a C variance for less than five feet where five feet is required. Parking stall size, a C variance for a nine by eighteen spaces where ten by twenty is required. Will also grant a exemption from the requirement for a loading zone. And we will approve a variance for two EV-ready spaces where three is required.
Counselor, any additional comments?
Now, as to the variances and as to the conditions, basically, the applicant has agreed to comply with all terms and conditions set forth in the board engineers review report, as well as the board planners review report in the comments in terms of the, the goose neck lighting. You want that to be reviewed and approved by, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, that would be our engineer.
Counselor, patient is the board chairman?
Yes, he can. Yes.
I think that's it. That's true.
Very good. So we have a motion. Our counselor has agreed to it. May I have a second?
Second.
Please poll the board.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Karad?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Luc D'Amiano?
Yes.
Mr. Tado?
Yes.
Mr. Seeger?
Yes.
Dr. Atty?
Yes.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Chair of the House, yes, the application is approved. John is the applicant here.
Thank you. The applicant was, the applicant's son here. The applicant was getting on a plane tonight to go to Greece, so he had to leave. Was he early?
Well, please tell your dad, thank you, and to you and your family, a very nice application. Welcome to Liverpool.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Any old business? Any new business? Motion for adjournment?
Make the motion.
Second?